Good afternoon. I'll call this meeting to order and ask you to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks for attending tonight. We've got a couple of things that we want to, items that I want to just clear before we move forward with the agenda. First of all, I've asked Dan Turnahoy to sit in and act as the clerk in Brian Bell's absence tonight, and he's agreed to do that. And then secondly, a change on the agenda. We're deleting item number 5A. HSD 2025 in action. Hudson's High School choir trip to Spain will not be reported on tonight, but will be reported on next month when we're better prepared for that. So moving forward with our first agenda item then is recognition. Sandy.
Thank you so much. So first, we're going to recognize Kelly Anderson. So Kelly, if you would come up to the mic, please. Kelly is a seventh grader at Hudson Middle School, and you can correct me if I do this wrong. She started out with the competition at the middle school of all qualifying sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, took first place at Hudson Middle School, then went on to regional competition, took third place there, I believe it was on February 19th, in Baldwin Woodville, and then as a third-place winner was the alternate for the state competition from our area. Do I have it correct?
Yes.
All right. So Kelly, tell us a little bit about, you know, spelling. How do you study for spelling, and what do you do to prepare yourself for a spelling competition?
Um, they had a study packet that was like 30 pages long of words, and so my parents, they just said words and I spelled them. So that's how I studied, like every night, so yeah.
Okay. And is spelling always been easy for you? I mean, like as a first grader, second grader?
Yeah.
Okay.
I guess, yeah.
All right. And did you get to, at the regional level, what word, what word did you have, I mean, how many rounds did it go before you reached the end?
Uh, like eight, probably.
All right. And then, did you travel all the way to the state, just in case you were needed as the alternate?
No, they said that they would contact me if they needed me.
If they needed you. Okay, so that was if first or second could not attend?
Yeah.
All right. Well, we're very proud of you. That's quite an accomplishment, too. One, won it at the middle school level, because there's, what, 1,300 students at the middle school?
Awesome.
What was your winning word at the middle school?
Uh, querulous.
What?
That's our president.
How do you spell querulous?
You wouldn't be able to tell by us.
We can't tell you if you're right or wrong.
All right. So board, any questions?
I do, I have a question.
Your hand's up.
Yeah. Actually, it's down right now, but, um, do you remember the word that you missed at regional?
Yeah.
What was that word?
Matinee.
And I'll bet you know how to spell it now.
Yes.
Yeah. That, that was my experience in the spelling, B2. I'll never get necessary wrong again, so.
Mr. President, I have a question for Kelly. How many people competed at the region, Kelly, when you went there? How many were at the, at the regional competition, and how many, is it, how many different schools, I guess?
Um, there were 19 kids participating, and I'm not sure how many schools, there were probably 19, I think one kid per school.
Thank you.
Do you plan on continuing with competing and spelling?
Yes, because I had a lot of fun participating in it.
Good for you. Good.
Nice job.
Thank you very much, Kelly. Congratulations. Okay, moving on.
Then we'll have Dina Whitwam come forward. Dina is one of those students that you kind of go, wow, how did she accomplish so much and she's only in high school?
Yeah, 17.
So when I started asking Dina to come, I knew that, I believe Principal Shoemaker had recommended her for this award, and she received what's called the Prudential Spirit of Community Award, and with that came also a President's Volunteer Service Award that came on behalf of, from President Obama. So that's where I heard that she'd received those awards. We wanted to recognize her for her volunteer work. Since that time, I don't know if you watched it all, but she was on Cool in Your School, Carol Lovin, showing some of the things she's doing at Rock, and then she also was in The Star Observer, also in The Pioneer Press, so she's getting a little, little fame here as we're going along. So would you please tell us a little bit about what you're doing with, as far as your volunteer studies and all the things that you're doing there are just really great for kids?
Oh, thank you, absolutely. So my Rock and Read project, I do that at EP Rock Elementary, and with a lot of the help from the staff, especially Ms. Lindberg, she was my mentor there. But my mom's the school counselor there, so I was able to start up my Rock and Reads program. And the, the drive at the, at EP Rock was to change the curriculum to have a focus on, in driving a passion for reading, and I thought that would be a cool opportunity to take advantage of that. So I started my Rock and Reads program, so kids will fill out scripts on a book they have read and why they liked it, and they'll have a prop or something. So then after school, I can go there and videotape the kids, so I, I get book talk videos on kids talking about what they liked about this book and, you know, how it was inspiring. And then the whole school gets to see these videos about twice a week, and it's pretty cool because, um, we took a survey at the end of the first year, and kids are saying that they're reading more of books, and they're reading a larger variety of books, and a lot of the books that they're choosing to read are based off of the Rock and Reads. So it's pretty neat.
Good. So tell us, I know you're involved in other things as well, so as a 17-year-old, what, what else are you involved in at the high school?
Well, I'm the junior class president, and I'm in NHS, Youth Action Hudson, and do volunteer service through them. I'm in forensics, One Act Drama Club. I was here for One Act a year ago or something.
Mm-hmm.
Oh goodness, I'm in track, I'm in cross-country, yeah, I'm in a lot of things.
All right. Questions from the board?
What are your future plans, Dina? What do you plan to do in the future?
Ironically enough, I think I'd like to go into math. I'm kind of looking at industrial engineering or statistics, so.
Interesting.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Congratulations, Dina. Wonderful job.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
Thanks so much.
Okay, we'll move on then to the superintendent's report. April 1st, school board election results.
Good evening. So the final results of the April 1st school board election are in, and you can see those projected behind me, and we want to welcome our new board member, Carrie Whitaker, who's in the audience. Carrie, would you stand up? She's been elected to one of the seats on the school board and will join the board on April 28th, will be her first official day. And then Lynn Robson has been re-elected to the board, and both of these seats, so congratulations to Lynn as well, and both of these seats are three-year terms. We also want to recognize April Simmons and thank her for her dedication and commitment and wanting to serve on the Hudson School Board.
Congratulations to both Carrie and Lynn, and thank you to April. Thank you.
So moving on, we have a experience for Hudson High School students coming up and students at the middle school and the elementary. We are welcoming 24 students and two teachers from Hasbach, Germany. This is an exchange. We had students from Hudson High School who traveled to Hasbach last summer for a similar three-week stay, and we're looking forward to hosting these students who hosted our students while they were in Germany. So they will be visiting each of the elementary schools and the middle schools, shadowing students at the high school. They will be visiting Matt Friedel's AP US Government class and touring the Minnesota State Capitol. Angela Schneider, middle school German teacher, has also started a Hasbach PENPAL program. So this is certainly a wonderful experience for Hudson students. We know that we have numerous students traveling internationally and supporting that, but not all of our students are able to do that, and it's great that other students can have access to international visitors and this kind of exchange. So this is evidence of HSD 2025 in action, specifically our graduate learner outcome global literacy.
All right. Moving on now.
Okay. So Jim Delune, middle school associate principal, has submitted his letter of resignation to take a position as middle school principal in Prescott, and the board will take action on his resignation under the consent agenda. And it's certainly bittersweet for us as we congratulate Jim as he moves on in his, to the next step in his career, but it also will be a loss for the Hudson School District, and we will miss his leadership, both at the middle school and at the district level. So I want to take a few minutes just to recognize just a few of his contributions since 2001, when he joined the Hudson School District 13 years ago. As, as middle school assistant associate principal, he certainly has been very committed to Hudson Middle School and to the middle school philosophy. His primary responsibility, one of his primary responsibilities, been working with students and families, and it really extends, his enjoyment of middle school students extends all through the school day, as you'll see him outside throwing a football around during lunches, and it's just, it's great to see his enjoyment of our students. We want to recognize that he was instrumental in the administrative decision-making process and collection of data that eventually led to the 2010 addition at the middle school, and he continues to provide leadership for the middle school's SMART goal work. The student memberships and clubs and organizations have grown significantly under his leadership at the middle school. Turning now to the district level, he has been, as you know, the response to intervention coordinator and provided leadership to RTI teams at each of our schools. He's served on numerous committees at the district level, and just most recently on the Educator Effectiveness Committee, you'll hear a report on that and a recommendation this evening, and he was the, provided leadership at the middle school for the last two years for the Educator Effectiveness Pilot. He was also on the High School of the Future Research Team, which eventually led to High School Learning for the Future Initiative that I know you know about. He is a certified trainer for the district in nonviolent crisis intervention, and so I've only said a few things, and yet this list could go on and on with his 13 years in the district. So certainly, we thank him for his dedication, his leadership, his many contributions to the Hudson School District, to our students, families, and our staff, but he is ready for this next step, to move into the position of principal, and we wish him the very, very best as he takes that next step. Moving on to the selection of the next middle school associate principal in Hudson, that position will be posted this week, and we would expect both internal and external candidates for that position. Principal Dan Koch will lead the selection process with assistance from Systems Improvement Director Dave Grambo. We anticipate that a recommendation will be coming back to the board in June.
I certainly want to say thank you to Mr. Delune for his 13 years of service, and I have to believe that 13 years is certainly an indication of success in a, in any organization where somebody has that kind of tenure. So I want to say thank you to him and wish him the very best in his next step with the Prescott School District. Okay, we're moving on then. We, we'd like to recognize a board member who has been here a long time, long, long time. I used to have black hair back when, before he, when he started on the school board. Dan Turnahoy has been, I think, an example of a, of an excellent board member, and my obs, my observations over the last eight years of being on the board of Dan have been his professionalism, his thoughtfulness, his, he's always has been appropriate in every, everything that he's done, the actions he's taken. He's been president of this board, he's served on, I think, just about every committee, and he has certainly given a great deal of his time and effort on behalf of our school district, and we certainly very much appreciate this. Dan has been recognized also on the state level at the last school board convention in January, where all 20-year and over board members who have served that long were recognized. There was even a 40-year member somewhere. Dan, you didn't want to go for that, I guess, huh? So, but I, I do just want to express my appreciation to Dan. I think this district has been served well by his, his service, and I just want to express my sincere appreciation to him. We have a certificate for him, I'm going to give him to him later, but I think there might be some other board members that might want to weigh in on you, too.
Mr. President?
Lynn.
So according to my everyday math, 21 years of service over two decades, minimum of 252 regular school board meetings, 504 committee meetings, 100-plus other community service-type events and meetings, Dan's close to 1,000 meetings that he attended on behalf of the school district. That's really amazing. So I just wanted to tell him or recognize him, the longevity of your service speaks volumes about his dedication and commitment to this district. Clearly, you have a passion for education, but after serving with Dan on finance, I can assure every community member listening to this, and many of us who serve on finance can attest to his balanced approach. Dan knows that you have to have a balanced approach to have the community be involved and support your decision-making, so I think you've, you've respected and valued the quality of education as well as the taxpayer in your decision-making, so I just want to thank you for your service, and I'm going to miss your dry sense of humor.
Well said. Lynn, thank you. Anybody else want to, last parting shot at Dan? Sure, Sandy.
I would just like to thank you, Dan, for your service. It's a long time. I don't know that I'd be up to that. So thank you very much for your service to the district.
Thanks, Sandy.
And, Mr. President, if I could, yes, I just want to add, Dan, I want to thank you for being a role model for a newbie like me on the board. I've got one year, and I can't imagine having 20 more on top of that, and I'm pretty certain I'm not going to be able to make that, but I, I think the, this is about you, your dedication is outstanding, you're very humble, and your approach being one of, rather than emotion, certainly there's drive there, but it's not taken off task with too much emotion. You're trying to weigh things carefully, and I appreciate your decision-making and the sacrifice that it takes. It's not just attending meetings, which certainly your time is important, but it does take time away from your profession. I know that, having done that for one year now, there's a little bit of a hit that is taken there, but also family time, and I think somebody ought to be taking this time to thank Chris, your wife, and as your kids as well, for the sacrifice they make in having you out there for 21 years, but thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Jamie. Bruce?
Enough's been said here, but I will also say thank you very much. You know, 21 years is a tremendous amount of time, and you always had a great smile when you come into the meetings and, and, you know, willing to chat it up, so I certainly appreciate that and, and the leadership and guidance that you've provided in the last year, so thanks a lot, and I don't know what you're going to do with all your time, man. I mean, you have to find something else to, to stay active with, so there's a lot of seats open, you're welcome anytime. Come on back.
Thank you. Dan, any comments?
Yeah, if I, if I could.
Sure.
Just say a few remarks, and I appreciate those comments from board members, and I really, you know, it really hasn't seemed like work. I mean, I've really enjoyed, you know, getting to know a lot of different people in the district as well as parents, and, you know, we have some great people in this community, great staff, great educators, great administrators, great parents, great, you know, I could go on and on, so we have a lot to be thankful for, both in this community and serving on the board. You know, I think my approach, at least I've tried to use an approach that's balanced, open-minded, trying to listen to both sides of the issues, and hopefully coming to a conclusion that I, that I feel is, is fair and reasonable, trying to keep in mind that I think the focus needs to be on how do we create a better educational environment in our school district and what's best for our kids. You know, I think if we, if we always try to keep that at the heart of what we do, I think we'll continue to, to do well. Probably the, the biggest kick I've had in this position, and I say this somewhat facetiously, but I think my youngest daughter still thinks I call the snow days. So that's, I'm, I'm going to lose that leverage on the home front, but I guess, just in conclusion, what I'd like to say is for the school district to stay true to HSD 2025, that has and continues to be a great vision for this district, stay true to maintain a financially sound district along with a healthy rainy day fund, stay true to instilling core values and principles among our student body, stay true to working together in a positive and cooperative way. And finally, please remember to keep the focus, as I've said, on what's best for our kids and their future. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. We do have a certificate from the Wisconsin Association of School Boards, and it reads, "A certificate of commendation is presented to Daniel Turnahoy in recognition for your service to the children in Wisconsin Public Schools, April 8th, 2014, signed by the President and the Executive Director of the WASB." So I'd like to present this to you. I think Meg might have a camera with her that we can do this.
Do it right here, in the boardroom background. Yeah, you are a full prayer. I got proof of that. Okay.
Okay, moving on then to item number five, reports 2004 through 2013 ACT comparison data. Sandy.
All right. Thank you. We're providing more of an update tonight with just a different way of looking at some of our data. In most of my ACT reports, we look at our overall composite score, compare it to previous years, look at the number of students that participated, do some comparisons with high-performing districts. There's a gentleman, Richard Dreschke, that we received some data from. Richard's a former math teacher, was a principal, started putting some, some of this data together for himself, and then realized other districts may also appreciate receiving it, and now teaches stats at the college level. But anyway, one of the pieces he looks at is kind of a 10-year average. So, you know, when you look at one data point, and then you look at the next year's data point, there's a lot of this kind of thing, and you're trying to see what's, what's the overall trend. So we pulled out three of the last reports just to show the 10-year trend data, because it kind of smoothes things out and gives you kind of a better perspective, and so in the 2002 to 2011 10-year report, you can see our 10-year average of an ACT is 23.24, grew then the following 10-year span, 23.31, up to 23.41. So it's a little, it's a better representation of exactly that we are making gains, true gains as we're continuing to work in becoming a high-performing district. Then I took out of his data how many high schools and where our ranking was, and you can see those there, 29, 28, 26. The numbers of schools varies just by what DPI reports on their site, we're not always sure why, why it goes up and down, but that's the number of high schools, public high schools. And then you can see that if you do the calculation, we went from the top 6.6% of public high schools in the state, now in the last three years, we're at the top 6%. So it's just another way for us to look at data, and we wanted to share that with you because it continues to point out that, yes, we are truly making gains no matter how we keep slicing our, our data, and thought that was worth, worth sharing out to our school board as well as our public.
Thank you, Sandy. Any questions from the board about this report? I just want to say once again, I've said this in the past, that this, this, this school district is of, I think, extremely high value to our taxpayers, in the sense that when you look at this data and you look at the performance of this district and the growth in the performance of this district, and you also consider the fact that we are also on the bottom in cost per student. So I think it's a tremendous statement that every, every taxpayer in Hudson should hear, and that is that they are getting a tremendous value, as just demonstrated by this report, for a cost that's at the lowest end in the, in the state of Wisconsin. So congratulations to us and to all of our teachers, our administrators. Congratulations to the, this community for giving this, this board their confidence in moving forward with the, with the initiatives that we've done, and I think it's just a tremendous, a tremendous report, and I just appreciate it very much.
Mr. President?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I saw that the number of reporting high schools is down, you know, 10 in two years. Do you know, do you have any idea why that is, that the number of schools reporting, or the 10 schools just giving up, or what's the?
Yeah, I don't. I really don't have an answer. I know there were a couple high schools that were in the 2003-2012 report that didn't show up. Now, sometimes there's just kind of errors in, in something that went on with their data so that they don't show up on the DPI site. That's about all I could share, is that for some reason, their data was not put on the DPI site.
There are some consolidations, consolidations that have occurred.
I was just going to say there's consolidations, and so some, in some districts, they have multiple high schools in a district.
Correct.
All right.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, Dan, do we have any citizens' requests to speak? Okay, then we'll move on to topics for action. We have first of all in item A8A, 2014-15 Final Staffing Recommendations. Lynn, and then Andrea.
Thank you, Mr. President. After a second round of reviews, the Personnel and Finance Committees have reviewed the final staffing recommendations and are supporting the recommendation of Tier One and Enrollment-Driven Staffing Changes, and Andrea will take us through those recommendations.
Yes, as Lynn just indicated, that the proposal's gone to committee four times over the last two months, so there have been multiple opportunities to review the document, to ask questions at the different committee meetings, and also that both Finance Committee and the Personnel Committee unanimously endorsed this plan. I can certainly go through the details, but as I indicated, there's been quite a bit of discussion up to this point, but I can entertain questions as well.
My understanding is that both the Personnel and the Finance Committees have both.
Unanimously supported.
Unanimously support these changes, okay? Anybody? Questions or comments? Okay. I'll entertain a motion to accept the staffing recommendations as, as presented.
So moved.
Motion by Bruce. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Lynn. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Item 8B, State-Mandated Educator Effectiveness Teacher Evaluation System. We'll start with Lynn, and then go to Dave.
Thank you, Mr. President. The district has piloted two teacher evaluation systems for measuring educator effectiveness. The district piloted, piloted the DPI system called TeachScape at Hudson Prairie, and the CISA 6 Effectiveness Project System, My Learning Plan, at high school, middle school, and I can't, I couldn't recall where else, Mr. Grambo.
EP Rock and North Hudson.
EP Rock. EP Rock. Thank you. And so, Mr. Grambo is going to take us through the details and the feedback that we received from the pilot participants to give the board a recommendation on an evaluation system that we would choose moving forward. Mr. Grambo.
Thank you very much. And I'm going to invite Charmaine Lindberg up. She's a fifth-grade teacher at EP Rock Elementary and has been instrumental in our work with our Educator Effectiveness Work Team. So, she's going to share some perspective as we roll through the presentation.
Charmaine, that button has to be up in order for it to be on and then you'll have to get really close to it in order for us to hear it.
Okay, I think it's.
We can pull it toward you too if you'd like.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. So, I'd like to start by explaining some of the background. As pointed out in the title, this is a state-mandated initiative. This wasn't something that we decided to take on ourselves. And as you know, there are several things that have, can come down the pike in terms of state mandates. And this is one that we put a lot of time into as it's a very important initiative. There are two pieces of legislation that drive that mandate forward. And I'm obviously not going to read all the details here, but the first one on the screen that you'll see is the fact that, or the statute that allowed for test data, student test data, to be included in a teacher's evaluation, which was a significant shift from past practice. And then finally, the statute that mandated that the state of Wisconsin come up with an educator effectiveness system to be implemented by all districts with the caveat that an opportunity for equivalency models to be developed and then selected by school districts that had to be included in that, in the plan. To date, there is still just one equivalency model that has been approved and that is the CISA 6 Effectiveness Project that we'll learn a little bit more about tonight. I want to talk through the goals of the statewide initiative, really from the perspective of Hudson. Now, these are, as I've said, the goals of the statewide initiative, but we aligned our work to these goals. And there's a few that we put a little bit more weight on than others. And one that was a new idea for us that became available because of technology and that is to directly connect our professional development to the information that we can gain through the teacher evaluation system. In the past, that was difficult because we didn't, we didn't contain the information gathered through teacher evaluation in such a way that it could be aggregated and analyzed. And now we'll be able to do that. So, we paid special attention to that. And also, the idea of documenting evidence. And you'll hear a little bit tonight about the idea that a major shift in the Educator Effectiveness Initiative as it stands is that teachers provide much of the input and the data directly, which is different than systems that have been in place in the past. And with that, I'm going to pass it to Mrs. Lindberg.
The Hudson School District Educator Effectiveness Development Pilot Summary is to date, Hudson is the only district in the state of Wisconsin to run pilots of both DPI system, TeachScapes, and the CISA 6 Effectiveness Project System, My Learning Plan, which I had the opportunity to work with over the last two years. The purpose of running two separate pilots was to place our district in the best possible position to make an informed decision regarding our educator effectiveness system. And this is an important decision which will affect directly the certified staff, the school administrators, and certainly ultimately the students of Hudson in the school district. The synthesis of our system comparison, advantages of CISA 6, again, which is the one, My Learning Plan, that I had the opportunity to work with, were two-way conversations between the teacher and principal, which were extremely valuable. The feedback was pretty much immediate. Teachers submitted evidence, data analysis, customization of forms, and flow-through with summative. The advantages of the DPI system, which is TeachScape, were professional development videos, standard reflection process. And throughout the committee, the Educator Effectiveness Work Team, in Phase 1, we took the time to learn the systems, figure out what was going on. And in Phase 2, we were able to define and value the systems as a collective group. And then, Phase 3, which we just rounded out, we compared and recommended our system right now. And then we will continue to work in Phase 4 with future work, hopefully based on teacher feedback, and continue to help the schools who weren't able to pilot the systems.
Mr. President, I have a question. All right. That Phase 1, you said was the, how long ago was that? Over what period of time are we talking about now?
We started that process in the 2011-2012 school year.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, and I'm going to take over from here. Thank you. And I do want to mention that Charmaine and the rest of the Educator Effectiveness Work Team put in a tremendous amount of work to drive this initiative forward and to make sure that the values that, what we value is included in the system. That really was the primary driving force of the Educator Effectiveness Work Team, was to ensure that we weren't just going to take a mandate and implement it and call it good. We put a lot of time into it, to the point that Charmaine made, that we're the only district to pilot both. That was a tremendous amount of work. And I know that Suzie Prather, Principal of Hudson Prairie's out there and she was kind of on an island piloting the DPI system. So, a lot of people contributed a lot to make this successful. And one of the final feedback loops that we gathered was a panel discussion where we took members of both pilot teams and asked them questions and did some comparisons and then gathered data based on those comparisons. Based on that data that we gathered, the CISA 6 My Learning Plan model was rated at 93.5% favorable and the TeachScape model was rated at 41% favorable. A lot of that really has to do with the timing of these pilots. And one thing that we've come to learn through this process is that the pilot for My Learning Plan was designed for us to learn as a district. The pilot for the DPI model was designed for us to provide feedback to DPI. And they're a little bit behind in their process of development and it provided, I think that's mainly why the ratings were so discrepant. But we do have a high favorability rating for the CISA 6 My Learning Plan model.
Mr. President, I just had a question then too. So, having the two systems, being the only school, what did you do to try and prevent any kind of prejudice or prejudging one over the other?
Good question. One of the things that we did was we created essentially the categories that we would rate, rate these systems and the information we'd gathered, we included in this grid and tried to be as objective as possible. It was difficult given the scope of the pilots, given the fact that we had one-third of our total staff piloting the My Learning Plan and a small group piloting the DPI model. It was difficult. We had to weigh that out. That the reason the DPI model was limited in size was not our choice. That was as large of a group as we were allowed to have under the DPI guidelines.
Thank you.
Sure. And then finally, we brought the recommendations and the feedback from the Educator Effectiveness Work Team to our administrative leadership team and they did unanimously support the adoption of the CISA 6 My Learning Plan system. And that brings me to this. And our recommendation to the board is, based on the feedback from the Educator Effectiveness Work Team, the data gathered from the pilots and the guidance from the administrative leadership team, we recommend the adoption of the CISA 6 Effectiveness Project System using My Learning Plan beginning in the 2014-15 school year.
Okay. Any other questions for Dave or Charmaine? When would the implementation on this begin?
The official implementation would begin the beginning of the school year, but as soon as we have approval of the system, we'll begin the background work because there's still a tremendous amount of work that needs to be done to get everyone up to speed. As Charmaine mentioned, the Phase 4 work of our work team is to support everyone in getting up to speed and that's principals, teachers, and stakeholders. In fact, tomorrow, we have a late start professional learning opportunity that will be focused on educator effectiveness because there's still a lot that needs to be learned.
And along that same line, Dave, in terms of a lot to learn, and this is a, this is a new phenomenon, so to speak, for our district as well as all the other districts in the state, do we have in our planning a review in terms of a regular review, in terms of its effectiveness and any adjustments needed that might be needed down the road, that type of thing?
Yeah, absolutely, we do. In fact, one of the requirements of the CISA 6 system is that there are two data review points throughout the year. We plan to do that more regularly. One of the things that we'd like to be able to do and actually the system allows us to do is to look at our data and review it in comparison to our results on the student learning side. We'd like to see an alignment. You know, we know we have very high-performing teachers and we know we have very high-performing students. We want to be able to find that alignment and find out those bright spots, find out those things that are really working well and replicate those as much as possible. So, that'd be part of the review process.
Excellent. Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Mr. President, a couple of questions. One is, it's sort of a daunting project, it seems like, because it talks about the conversations between the teacher and the principal. So, would these be staggered over? Just give me a sense of how that would work.
Yeah, that's a very good question, a good clarification. I'm glad you brought that up. We will still maintain a three-year evaluation cycle. So, approximately one-third of our certified staff would be on what we call on-cycle for their summative evaluation. Now, a difference in this system is that it, there are multiple components. And we have developed a system that will phase those in over time. So, not everything happens on that third year. Teachers are getting feedback throughout the process, but there's a more formal process every third year.
Okay. In terms of the different components that are being evaluated, are they weighted differently in terms of, you know, if, you know, one component carries a lot more weight than another evaluation component, you know what I mean?
Yeah, yeah. And actually, they are not weighted other than 50% of the total evaluation of a teacher's performance is based on student learning outcomes and then 50% based on the standards of practice. Other than that, there's no dictated weight of one standard versus another.
Any other questions otherwise? I'd entertain a motion with similar language here that's been in the recommendation by Dave.
Mr. President?
Yes, Sandy.
I'll make, I will move that the Hudson School District recommend, adopt, do the adoption of a CISA 6 Effectiveness Project System using the My Learning Plan beginning in the 2014-15 school year.
A motion by Sandy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jamie. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thanks for all of your work.
Thank you.
And I'm sure that this will prove to be beneficial for all of us, including our teachers and administrators and our students. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Somebody would like to make a motion regarding the consent items, including the specific language around revenues and expenditures?
Mr. President, I'd like to make last and final motion for me, that the Director of Financial Services be authorized to pay bills in the amount of $1,643,510.61.
Okay, a motion by Dan. Is there a second? Second by Bruce.
Clarification?
Yes.
Does it include the rest of the consent items?
Yeah, that's what I was wanting to, I guess. Do you want to amend that motion, Dan?
Screwed up.
Include the other consent items?
I screwed up my last and final motion. Yes, I'd like to include, besides the expenditures, the items listed in the agenda under the consent.
Okay, so now I think we need a second on that.
Second.
Second by Bruce. All right. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Thank you. Motion carries. Okay, we're moving to committee reports. Finance Committee meeting, Dan.
All right. Get my notes here. When the Finance Committee met on Monday, March 31st, we did take a look at the final staffing recommendations that Lynn and Andrea talked about. And for the most part, the committee passed those with full support. And then we also had a topic on strategic compensation plan, the teacher-salary consultant selection. So, Andrea provided us an update on that process. I believe there are three proposals. And this was also being vetted through the Teacher-Salary Consultant Committee. And I think where that's at is they were going to check out the references anymore on that. Andrea?
We're still in the process of both checking the references and also negotiating with the selected, or tentatively selected individual.
Okay. So, we had a discussion on that. And then lastly, we went into a closed session. That's all.
Okay. Any questions of Dan or the Finance Committee? Thank you, Dan. Learning and Program Development Committee meeting, Brian Bell, is not available tonight. Jamie Johnson will be giving that report.
Yes, the committee met last week. We went through the state-mandated educator effectiveness in probably more detail than we did tonight, but it was good to have, you know, the ability to ask questions. And this is kind of a big deal. I know that we didn't spend a whole lot of time, but there's been hundreds and hundreds of person hours into this whole concept and it is kind of exciting. But what I really wanted to comment was too, the buy-in is going to be there with the teachers because of the 90, what was it, 91% or 93% approval rating. And this is, you know, a three-year process. So, there's not going to be any real surprises here. I know there's still some more learning and growing to go with this, but I think it's a doable plan and one that, you know, should lead to good results, I think. Then the, so there was consensus on that. Then we had policy deletions, which we've approved under the consent agenda. And just amazing, as we go through these policies, how many are either really outdated, unnecessary, and so forth. So, I like the fact that we're cleaning up our policy manual. And so, that was basically the consensus to approve that.
Any questions of Learning and Program Development Committee? Okay, we'll move on then to Facilities and Grounds Committee. Jamie will do that one too. Thanks.
Yeah, I chaired because you were attending by way of telephone, I guess.
Right.
And we had an update from Tim Erickson on the preparation for St. Croix River Crossing and work on State Highway 35. I don't know, Sandy, if you have anything to add there, but I think it was very interesting to see the plans. And we're hoping that, asking the state anyway, to see if there can be some adjustment anyway for how we can work the entrance to Holt School. I think that that's still a process and we probably haven't heard anything back since then.
No, not yet. But I did talk with Town Chair Dan Gavin and he's contacting DOT so we can get a meeting going.
Trying to minimize any cost, potential cost to the district and changing that. But still, it was interesting to see how close it's going to be to this bike trail and so forth. Obviously, it's still a couple of years out, I guess, from full implementation. And then we moved to go into closed session, which was the longer portion of the meeting, actually.
Thank you, Jamie. Any questions for the Facilities and Grounds Committee? Okay, our last report will be Personnel Committee meeting. Lynn?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Personnel Committee met on Tuesday, April 1st. We had five items on the agenda, three of which we covered earlier in the Topics for Action. And in the consent items, additionally, we had an update that Dan covered on the strategic compensation consultant. And then lastly, the committee moved into closed session. That concludes my report.
Okay. Any questions Personnel Committee? Or Lynn? Okay, thank you all. We will, I'll entertain then a motion for it to move to closed session with the specific language that's provided in the agenda, item 10.
You want to take it?
Go for it, Dan.
I can take it too if you.
It's a long one.
Okay, here we go. Mr. President, I'd like to adjourn to, we would like to adjourn to closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statutes 19.85, Parent 1, Parent C, Preliminary and Final Notice of Nonrenewal of Certified Staff and C, Considering Employment of a District Employee, deliberate for negotiating the sale and/or purchase of public property, F, considering financial personal histories and disciplinary data of specific persons and the preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems, which if discussed in public could have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputations of those persons referred to and such histories or data, and G, conferring with legal counsel who is rendering oral advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which the district is likely to become involved.
Okay, a motion by Dan. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Lynn. Roll call vote, starting with Sandy.
Gerke, aye.
Johnson, aye.
Holland, aye.
Robson, aye.
Hanson, aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you. Thank you for attending tonight.